Okay. We will call this meeting to order for December 2nd, 2019. That'll be the date, all day today. And we have, until later. And we have some members of the Gothos contingency, family and friends coming in with the flag. Come on down.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Soon as we get completed here, we will take roll.
With pleasure, Mayor Pappan. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Gothos? Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Mayor Pappan.
Here. Okay. So, we're gonna start with a ceremonial item that we have. And I will ask Lourdes Enriquez to come down with her daughter Gabby. And they're kind of filling in for our mayor's hero recipient. So, come on down. So, the mayor's quarterly hero recognizes one who makes contributions to the community. It recognizes someone who voluntarily prioritizes the community. The benefits of their giving are somewhat intangible, but this person knows the intrinsic value of their giving to the community. After all, city government can't serve every need by itself. The selfless giving of our community members is essential. Lourdes is here tonight with younger sister Gabby to accept the mayor's quarterly hero award on behalf of their older daughter/sister, who's away at college. And I am so humbled to honor Olivia Enriquez tonight because she is truly an inspiring woman. While in middle school, Olivia watched her peers struggle through the pressure of being socially accepted, getting good grades, and measuring up to parent expectations. She was often a sounding board, and she wanted to help. In high school, she too found herself struggling with social and academic pressures, and it affected her self-confidence and well-being, much like the rest of us, I'm sure. So, she decided to focus on what made her happy, which was helping others through similar struggles. She turned her energies to focusing on awareness for student health and mental health awareness. She teamed up with Powell to create the Stride for Awareness Run. Unfortunately, five weeks before the first race, a classmate took her life. It was devastating, but Olivia found the courage to forge ahead and continues to do so to this day. In 2020, Strides for Awareness will be conducting its fourth annual run. Our community is so enriched by Olivia's efforts to raise awareness, especially for mental health. And you'll just love this, when her mother writes to me and says, "Honestly, Olivia made me a better person and worthy to be a parent." So, I'm so proud of, I know she couldn't be here, but hopefully she can watch the videotape. And I know, Lourdes, you wanted to say a couple words, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pappan and councilmembers. Olivia wishes she could've been here tonight, but she did write something for me to say. Thank you, Mayor Pappan and councilmember, for honoring me as one of your quarterly heroes. Your support of my efforts and presence at Stride for Awareness events has meant so much to me, and I'm so honored and thankful to be receiving this award. Mental health awareness in my community is very important to me. Thank you so much for aiding me in spreading awareness about the importance of student health and mental well-being. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. And so, we have a little memento to honor Olivia as a mayor's quarterly hero, so I know we can give her that as well.
Thank you.
I'll come down and give it to you now.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you guys so much for being here.
Thank you.
All righty. Now, let's go to consent calendar, shall we, Madam Clerk?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number three, Merit Employees Salary Schedule Approval. Item number four, Classification Update Finance Department. Item five, School District School Resource Officers Agreement Amendment. Item number six, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is being pulled at the request of the Finance Director. Item number seven, Per diem Employee Health Insurance Agreement Amendment. Item number eight, Receipt and Use of Development Impact Fees and In-Lu Fees Annual Report. Item number nine, Citywide Building Access Control System Contingency and Contract Change Orders. Item number 10, California High-Speed Rail Reimbursement Agreement Amendment. Item number 11, Fourth and Fremont Green Infrastructure Project Amendment. Item number 12, Wastewater Treatment Plant Nutrient Removal and Wet Weather Management Upgrade and Expansion Project Amendment. And item number 13, Transportation Analysis Policy Development Appropriation Agreement.
Excellent. Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt 1 through 5 and 7 through 13?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Lee, come on down. Item number six.
Good evening, Mayor Pappan, members of the council, Rich Lee, Finance Director. There's two corrections that are on the dais before you. They're related to the Management Discussion and Analysis, pages 13 and 14 of the CAFER. I just ask that when you consider the item, that you account for those corrections. The real reason for me asking for a few moments of the council's time is to acknowledge and thank the efforts of my Accounting Division staff, most notably Amelia Archer, Ada Young, and Samantha Chung. So, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their tireless efforts to make sure that the city issued its comprehensive annual financial statement, not one, but not two, but actually three financial statements. So, they actually issued financial statements for the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department and for the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority. So, I just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
And mention that they worked night and day, including a lot of weekends this fall, in order to get our annuals done for the city, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So, that's above and beyond. Thank you so much, Rich, to you and to Amelia and Samantha and Ada. We're most grateful.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, do we have a motion to pass item number six with those modifications?
I'll make a motion to accept the comprehensive annual financial report.
Excellent.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay. So, that, we're done with consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
This council is just so efficient, I can't stand it. All right. So, now, we will move on to item 14.
Would you like to ask for public comment first?
Oh, public comment, sorry. Always forget about public comment. Okay, public comment. Keeping in mind that those things that are not on the agenda can be commented on, and then we can, if, we won't be commenting on them, but if there is a way to direct staff for assistance, we can. Any public speaking comment?
No speaker slips.
Okay, great. So, we'll skip over that part, and we'll go to item 14.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I take over the agenda for just a moment?
Okay.
We have a, thank you. I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. I have said that more than once this year, but it is true, and it is so easy to serve a mayor such as you. We have much to be thankful for, and I would like to read this resolution that we are passing unanimously in your honor. Resolution number C7, 2019, commending Diane Pappan for her term as mayor of the City of San Mateo. Resolved by the City of San Mateo, California, that Diane Pappan has served the citizens of San Mateo as a highly regarded member of the City Council since 2015, and as mayor from December 2018 to December 2019. And whereas she has represented the city at numerous public functions, attended neighborhood and public meetings to engage with the residents, has cut innumerable ribbons, dug in many shovels at groundbreakings, and has seemingly been everywhere all at once. And whereas Diane brought an easygoing manner and lighthearted style to meetings and interactions with colleagues, staff, and the public, serving to make her very approachable on any issue as she presided over 45 special and regular meetings and facilitated the review of 412 items, efficiently getting the city's business done by keeping the agenda moving, even conducting community meetings during PG&E blackouts, just like tonight. Whereas, her year as mayor kicked off by commending the fire department for its 132 years of service, she oversaw an exhaustive list of projects, programs, initiatives, and study sessions. With the major ones enumerated on the back of this resolution, it is important to highlight that this included the effort to position the city to secure $362 million in low-interest loans from the United States Environmental Protection Agency's Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, WIFIA. Numerous items were also heard on the unwinding of the fire department, many park facility plan updates, innumerable compensation in classification studies and MOUs, the general plan update, vision and process, all aspects of the housing issue, from pending legislation reviewed to project approvals, and even included finding off-duty police staff a place to sleep. And whereas, a few items of note included her involvement in the successful formation of the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, Highway 101 Express Lanes Project Working Group, the groundbreaking of the wastewater treatment plant project, more closed sessions conducted after regular sessions than any other year, saying goodbye to a council member and hello to a new one. And in the great Super Bowl SmackDown of 2019, Brady versus Goff, or San Mateo versus Nevada, her positive attitude alone made sure that San Mateo won. And whereas the mayor often is the city's face to other agencies, and she handled this with aplomb, including engaging with Cal Water on fire issues, Cal Train on neighborhood concerns, Cal Trans on managed lanes projects, and neighboring cities on shared services and land use. And in her role as mayor, she flew to Washington DC to help secure the WIFIA loans that ensured the wastewater treatment plant project would be the most financially advantageous to ratepayers. And whereas the highlight of her year may have been her presiding over the 125th anniversary of the city's formation, in which her creativity, collaborative spirit, sense of fun, and ability to embrace any role shined as she literally wrote the script for the full reenactment of city's first council meeting, to the great hilarity and bonding of all. Whereas Diane knows everybody, and her warm hello from the dais, and folksy "come on down", coupled with her witticisms, great smile, and contagious laugh, served to make this year a very friendly one for any staff or public member coming before it. And whereas her thoughtful questions and studious approach to each item ensure that everyone on the dais and in the public had the opportunity to share their thoughts, as she worked hard to leave no one behind, achieve consensus, and strive for unity on all decisions made. And whereas she personifies a keen intellect, strategic mindset, great adaptability, coupled with a humble spirit in which her way of walking through life was embodied in the philosophy to not take herself too seriously, all of which contributed to her ability to be tenacious in chipping away at issues, delve deeply into causes, embrace candor, consider all sides all while ensuring the mood stayed uplifted for the betterment of any decision. Now, therefore, the City Council does hereby formally thank and extend its deepest appreciation for the commitment, dedication, and heartfelt public service given by our mayor, Diane Pappan, to all of the San Mateo community through her leadership gift of time and vision for this future.
I'm just gonna hang that in my 14-year-old daughter's room.
The wonderfulness of a mother is never forgotten.
In honor of that service and from our gratitude, we have this gift for you, which I would like you to open. It should be very easy, just.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I look forward to gifts. There we go. Oh, very cool. Very cool. One must be very delicate.
Very nice.
Very delicate. Very delicate. That's beautiful. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And that's not all.
Oh, but there's more. This is cool. Oh, my. Lovely.
On behalf of the entire city, you have our gratitude.
Thank you, sir. I feel so like.
Okay, and if I may say a couple words. All of that, all of that time and all of those actions that you just heard read out loud could have never been done without the support and sacrifices made by your families, Dan and Alexa. Thank you so much for sharing Diane with us and letting her serve the City of San Mateo. Your sacrifices are definitely appreciated, and thank you so much.
Now, Madam Mayor, do you have any words for us?
Well, I thought you'd never ask. I don't know, maybe I should cool off my resolution. Thank you. And thank you for the resolution and the gifts. It's been lovely to hear those things. Much of what we do, I'm not even sure how much the public knows about, you know? And I so enjoy the work. That's not on my script. But I just want you to know, like, I really enjoy the work, and I feel very lucky to do it. So, that's definitely from the heart, as is the rest of my script, but nonetheless, I just thought you should know that. Anyway, it's been an incredible honor to serve as mayor this year. This is a phenomenal city to call home. In large part, it's because we have a tremendous sense of community here. As I said early on, one sense of community is profoundly affected by what their city does, and that's because the city's work has a very immediate impact on our daily lives. With this premise in mind, I wanted to touch on two topics. One, the city's work that enhanced our sense of community, and two, the city departments working together as their own community, if you will. So, I begin with how the city's work positively impacted our sense of community. As one of my passions is infrastructure, I wanted to start with this one. There was community concerning the underground storage tank. Public Works collaborated extensively with surrounding neighborhoods so that this project would be placed and completed in a way that the community found acceptable. There was community when the North Shoreview Neighborhood and the city worked together on the Levee and Pump Station to meet infrastructure needs and get out of the flood zone. There was community when the main library completed the children's library renovation. You want to see community, go there on a Saturday morning. It is immensely popular. There's community by way of our two vans that bring city services to neighborhoods. There is the Park and Rec Mobile van that has great traveling programs, and there's Mateo that the library van got rolling this year. So, now, the library does outreach throughout the city, including storytimes in neighborhood parks. There's community, especially this time of year, with ice skating and the Festival of Lights in Central Park. There was community with the 50th Anniversary Celebration of this King Center. It was a spectacular bringing together of people and historical mementos of the King Center. The new teen center was also revealed, and it's a hub of activity, especially with its new stadium seats, big screen, video games. There was community in the general plan update. There are major efforts underway for public outreach. Community development also reached the milestone of adopting a comprehensive, yet succinct, vision statement, and enroll-up-your-sleeves hard work with the general plan subcommittee. They identified 10 study areas. There was community with the city manager's office e-newsletters that make for easy reading and really push information to our residents. This also, this office also supports community with its economic development, sustainability, and volunteer coordination efforts. There was community with Park and Rec's renovation of the banquet and restaurant facilities at Papa Creek Golf Course, because after all, nothing says community like breaking bread together. And I will say, I have tried the food, try par three, and it's phenomenal, so I highly recommend it to anybody out there. Now, to the city hall community with departments working together, and of course, the byproduct of this teamwork is efficient operations for our residents. First up is in establishing San Mateo Consolidated Fire. We saw the team-up of fire, the city attorney's office, the finance department, and human resources. In the design of Fire Station 25, we saw the team-up with fire and Public Works. Then, there was the police department teaming up with Public Works to address traffic issues and enhance parking enforcement. Public Works also teamed up with the finance department and the city attorney's office on the clean water program, where, as you've mentioned, we broke ground for the new treatment plant, and we're now under way with the financing secured by $270 million in revenue bonds and low-interest loans from the EPA and the State of California. IT teamed up with the community development to improve online customer service for permit review. San Mateo PD teamed up with the POA, the city attorney's office, and the city council for the police barracks and an east side substation. SMPD also teamed up with the community to assist in investigating crimes. They have registered private security cameras, and with the use of a map overlay, they actually work in real time on solving crime. We also saw, and this cannot be underscored, we saw the whole city team up and work together over the last year as we hired a new city manager and five department heads. There was new community development, there was our city librarian, the finance director, the police chief will be coming in, and Consolidated Fire hired a new fire chief. That is truly the community coming together. But I would be remiss if I did not mention the great kahuna of virtually all things community, with multiple departments in our residents and businesses coming together for the September nights on B Street events. We had the community at large out there dancing and doing trivia, working the event. We had the Chamber of Commerce, the Clerk's Office, the city manager's office, economic development, Public Works, Park and Rec, the police department, fire, and community development, and got in there with the general plan outreach booth. Unless we not forget that the city council got its thespian on, along with the city manager and some other department heads, for our portion of celebrating the 125th anniversary of the city. The collective effort for these events truly celebrated the sense of community that makes San Mateo such a special place. In closing, I want to acknowledge and thank the city council, including former deputy mayor Maureen Fresket, who was here for the vast majority of the year. We worked together to hammer out nuances on many subjects. We build consensus on tough, tough decisions for the benefit of this city's 110,000 residents, whether it was city contracts, infrastructure projects, ordinances, or future goals and planning. I was proud to work with each of you to move the needle and get something done for our community. I want to thank my family, who puts up with me, but they truly are a united force that makes it possible for me to serve. And I'm so mushy about that, I can't even go there. And then, to the community, it was a tremendous honor to serve as mayor. I loved encountering all our young kids, our older residents, and everyone in between from all walks of life. I think our community really is a treasure. I think our community is bright, and I look forward to serving at the pleasure of Mayor Joe Gothos. And there you have it. So, thank you, and thank you all for being here.
Well, Mayor Pappan, before I turn it over to my colleagues to allow them to make some comments, I think I want to also acknowledge Dan and Alexa. It takes a village, it takes support at home, and I know you had that all year, and it was fantastic to see their support, and I know it was really appreciated. I also want to acknowledge Jack Matthews. Jack, also our former mayor, and for his 20 years of service to the City of San Mateo. And for those 20 years, Jack had Patricia at home supporting him as well. Thank you. So, just a few words from me before I turn it over to my colleagues. You had the preparation of a fierce elite attorney, the toughness of a bulldog who doesn't retreat or back down, and the finesse of a noble stateswoman. You, this year, you did the family Pappan name proud, but your well-deserved reputation is all your own and hard-earned. And as a resident of San Mateo, I'm extremely proud. I thought you were the best mayor. Thank you very much.
You know, I can say whatever I want. You know, as a relatively newer councilmember, it's really a privilege to see councilmembers serve with councilmembers, but also, before I was on the dais, just to see the different styles. And I always think about, you know, what attributes, what characteristics do I want to incorporate, not only as a councilmember, but perhaps maybe someday as mayor? And I was thinking about what I most appreciated about your mayorship. And at first, I'd like to say, just, your sense of humor is second to none. It really makes a fun atmosphere. It's professional, yet it's very fun. You lighten up the mood when it gets a little tense, and you really have a gift there. Along those lines, you really seem to have a way with words, just always picking out the right quote, the right thing to say. They always just seem so eloquent. I don't, I don't know how you did it for all of those meetings, because every one that I attended, you seemed to pick out just the perfect things to say.
Google.
Google's good. And the meetings were very smooth, but you had a great balance of kind of a little bit of pit bull, but a little bit of golden retriever. It's very, very smooth meetings. And I really appreciated how hardworking you were. It came through. I mean, you always prepared, as Joe said. You put in so many hours, and the City of San Mateo is just so lucky to have had you for being mayor. And lastly, you know, you just seem to be a natural up there. And I mean, you just tell by the words you just said, but you, this is what you were meant to do. So, thanks.
Well, I want to thank not only Diane's spouse and daughter, and Jack's spouse and his family, but every councilmember's family, because we all contribute a lot of time to taking care of the people that live in San Mateo. It's a lot of work. Diane went down an exhaustive list, but we actually all take part in all those things, and I'm sure Diane's happy to share credit with us for that.
Or blame.
Okay, I was burying the hatchet. But I just want to say that, you know, so much has already been said, I'm at the risk of repeating things. I just want to say, it's been fun to work with Diane. And to go to Washington DC twice, we've gone together to secure the money we needed for our wastewater treatment plant project and our other part of the project, that was a lot of fun. And we worked with our Congresswoman Jackie Speer and our other representatives in Washington DC. We got to learn and see and experience things most people don't. And it's really a great thing to be a councilmember, and Diane did it with such grace and humor. And I mean, you can't say that enough. Diane has a way. She's the one who said she was gonna make sewers sexy. I mean, who else? Who else would even have thought about saying that? Okay? So, you have to give her, she's got hooks, fine, okay? But anyway, I have to say, I've enjoyed this year with Diane as a mayor, and it's been a good thing. So, I want to thank all of you for being here and being very patient with us as we go through all the things we have to go through to arrive at the path that we feel is best for the City of San Mateo. So, thank you, Diane. Thanks to everybody else. Thanks to Councilmember Rodriguez's family, soon to Councilwoman Lee's family, to my wife, and to all the other former councilmembers who've got us where we are, okay? And I also want to thank And I also want to thank all the other agencies that we cooperate with. I see Joel Amariana here from the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and together we all get it done. The Public Works Department also I want to thank, because they have huge responsibility in the city, and they really are the people who keep things going. And I'm referring to the wastewater treatment plant. So when you want things to go away, they make sure it does. And so, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
And there's more. Diane, one of the things that I've heard you say a couple of times is that democracy is not a spectator sport, and these are words that I know you live by, and, and I just hear you sending this message to everyone in the community. And I think that, you know, to say it is one thing, but I feel like what you do is you help people really feel that, and the way that you do that is through the joy that you bring into the room and into the work that you do. It comes across very deeply. Everyone can feel how, how driven and how committed you are, and how much fun you're having, and, and it's really an inspiration to all of us about what we can all get from contributing to our community to the level that you are. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you for those remarks.
Before we give the mayor one more well-deserved, thunderous round of applause, would anyone else like to speak? Are there, is there anyone else who has any comments tonight? Anyone from Milbrae?
Anyone from my family.
Anyone other than Milbrae? Anyone other than Milbrae?
We filled out a speaker slip. Good evening. My name is Gina Pappan. I'm from the Milbrae City Council, and I'm with Mayor Wayne Lee. We would like to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, on a job well-done. And for those in your community who don't know, being the mayor of a city also involves being representative to the rest of the cities, 20 cities in San Mateo County. And your mayor has stepped up and was elected to be our representative for the Sea Level Rise Initiative and now Project, and also the Managed Lane Project. These are enormous projects which affect all of our cities throughout the region, and it takes an individual who can listen and absorb what's happening here. It takes a lot of extra time, many of us struggle with, and she has put in that time and that effort, and has done a wonderful job in not only representing the City of San Mateo, but all of us throughout the region, the 20 cities. So congratulations, Madam Mayor. You've also done the Pappan family motto, "Make it happen, make it Pappan." You have represented quite well, and by doing that, too, I think one of the best aspects of your representation here is that it's not about we, the elected individuals, it is about the people we represent. And that is something that is, you have shown great skill in achieving here, because we all try to do what's best for the community and the people we represent and not ourselves as individuals. Although I don't think the one family member you left out is going to appreciate it, because every politician's best friend is the dog at home. So, Juno's not here tonight, but everybody knows in politics, the one individual or best friend you can count on is the dog. So I'll give Juno your best.
Evening, Madam Mayor, and council members, and members of the San Mateo, City of San Mateo. My name is Wayne Lee, Mayor, current mayor of Milbrae. Thank you for inviting me to speak. You've all been good friends, and to highlight that, and just to say, it's less biased, maybe? But no, she actually, everything that Gina said, a council member, former Mayor of Milbrae has said, is, is true. And I really appreciate being mayor and working with you this year. You've been a great champion for San Mateo, not only for the City of San Mateo, but for San Mateo County. You made many strides that represented the county well, that affected many of our cities, and that's why I'm here, to show appreciation that the things you do for the other cities, and representing the other cities in many respects. And your, your comments and your insights were very on point, and you strongly advocated for those points. And you also see a lot of foresight for the city, you've already, like, participating in our international trade initiative that tried to bring more business to San Mateo County, looking into the future, and also positioning not only the City of San Mateo, but the County of San Mateo in a better situation in the forthcoming years. You had to make many difficult decisions and many controversial decisions, all of you, and we appreciate that, and all of our cities benefit from your, because you're one of our bigger cities, of course, and we all watch what you do. We all, in our own way, all of our cities makes, makes a little contribution, but of course, San Mateo is in the middle of the county. And on the side note, I'd like to welcome the new council member. I like your last name, by the way. So I'm sure you do very well. And so I just thank, thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your service. Thank you for representing the city and the county very well.
Thanks for being here, Mayor.
So, I don't think there's any more speaker slips. I agree with the two speakers, you are the best Mayor Pappan in the history of San Mateo County.
Not bad for a first-time mayor.
I try, I try. All right. So next up, it's time. I'm so glad we had this time together. So now what we're going to do is we're going to do our mayoral reorganization. And with that, I would like to be in the position of, of making a nomination. Is that all right with you folk? Good. So I would like to nominate the person that just said all those nice things about me, Joe Gauthel for mayor. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously? I didn't hear a no. Or an abstention, so there we go. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor Gauthel.
I'm going to move us right along to item 14B, which is, now is the time to nominate a deputy mayor. At this time, I would like to nominate Eric Rodriguez to be our deputy mayor.
I'll second.
We have a nomination in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Whether you like it or not.
I'd like to go slightly out of order and ask if there is any public comment on 14A or 14B at this time? If there is, I seeing none, we're going to move on. Eric, do you have any comments?
No, thank you, and it's going to be an honor to serve.
Congratulations. Briefly, if we could have three minutes, Madam Clerk, I'm going to keep it to way less than that. In Lincoln's second inaugural, he talked about with malice towards none and charity for all. And in, in the model of Diane Pappan, I think that that's how she approached being mayor. You are just a stellar example, and I thank you, and I hope to, to live up to the same, the same, I hope to live up to your standards. We have a great year ahead, amazing people, as Diane mentioned, our city manager Drew Corbett, Kohark Ajayan in our development department, Sheila Kanzian as our Parks Director, Brad Underwood has his hands full in Public Works. We have our new fire chief for the Joint Powers Board, which is Chief Ray Iverson, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize John Healy. John, would you please stand up? Our outgoing fire chief, John, thank you very much. John, the floor is yours if you want to speak. No, I'm just kidding. We have hired a new police chief as well, Ed Barberini. Of course, everyone knows that Chief Manheimer is also here. Chief, thank you for all your many years. The most tenured chief. And for a few months in between Chief Manheimer and Chief Barberini, we have Captain Norris, who will be our interim police chief. Thank you, Captain Norris, for your, your service. Diane also mentioned our new city librarian, James Moore. It's been my pleasure to get to know James. James, thank you for all your service. And we have our new council member, Councilmember Lee. This is a great team. I am proud to be among this team. This is really fantastic. Before I move on, I want to mention, we, we mentioned all these council members and our families. I want to thank all of the council members from, I think we have a quorum from Belmont right now, so. Thank you to all the, the council members who joined us. Thank you to all the San Mateo commissioners who are joining us tonight. Thank you to everyone. I, I look out and I see nothing but friendly faces, friends and family, residents of San Mateo, and our neighbors. We have incredible projects that Diane talked about that we're going to get into. North Shoreview is going to get out of the flood zone. I can't wait to break ground on that. That is going to happen. We have all our permits. We are on our way to eliminating failed streets, which is something that everybody cares about. We are giving appropriate lighting to every neighborhood for safety across this city. We have that state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant, which is part of our clean water program. Safe and beautiful parks for everyone. We will balance the budget and address pension liability. We will continue to emphasize great police and fire service. But the challenge of our generation is climate change and sustainability. There is no Planet B. We must continue to lead the world in reducing greenhouse gases, working with Peninsula Clean Energy, increasing transit options, and amazingly, the, the Water Board that Diane had a part in starting, our resiliency for San Mateo County. I want to tell you a very brief story about a relative of mine who passed away this year. My adopted grandfather by marriage, my sister's adopted grandfather by marriage, who was over 100 years this year when he passed away. Nono Barbero was born in San Mateo over 100 years ago. Like me, his father passed away when he was very young. His mother took him back to Italy from San Mateo. Right? What a mistake that was. But Nono went to Italy, part of the greatest generation. He fought in World War II against Mussolini. He worked so hard after the war to make his way back to California, back to San Mateo, and he lived his life as both an advocate and an inspiration. He was recognized by the state legislature for all of his advocacy, for feeding the poor, for, for doing the hard work day-to-day. He would, he didn't like to drive his car. He, he was trying to save the planet all by himself. He didn't think it was civilized to act any other way. At his funeral, his grandson said that in his last conversation with Nono Barbero, he, he was given a homework assignment, and that homework assignment is for all of us. He said four things. Number one, eat less beef. Number two, plant a tree. Number three, engage with someone you disagree with and recognize their humanity in that conversation. And number four, he said, fill a pothole. And I hope, I hope that we do all of those things this year as a team for San Mateo. Last and most importantly, I have to thank my team at home, my wife, my mother, my brother, my brothers and sisters, but my kids, you are my support structure. I love you more than anything in the world. We do this all together. You've been to more city council meetings than many council meeting, council members that I know, and, and you make them all better. Even those people who show up and they want to do nothing but complain, they can't help but walk away, understanding that all of us are just trying to do this to better the city. So, I thank you. You mean the world to me, especially you sharing your support. You make me a better person, and, and I can't imagine doing this without you. I went over my time, but I think everyone will forgive me. It is time to eat. I want to invite you all to the reception that follows. Diane is planning something amazing for us, so let's go, go all enjoy each other's company. Thank you all for coming.